Hi, I am Rick Zanmore. I live on Ashworth Road. And I'm the lucky guy who gets to moderate this meeting, which is sponsored as always by the Broadbrook Grange and also this year by the town. BCTV is doing tech support. Thank you Nolan, Austin, and Brian at BCTV especially for purchasing a bigger Zoom package so we can have more than 100 people. So welcome to the meeting. Thanks for caring about your town and showing up. Please mute your microphone. I'm just going to run through the instructions which you've seen. And then just I'm going to run through the agenda and then we're going to jump into the select board presentation. Please mute your microphone. If joining by phone, use star six to mute unmute. Make sure your first and last name is displayed correctly. Use rename under participants icon on your screen or hover over the blue square on your video to correct your name. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature under reactions or participants. If joining by phone, use star nine to raise or lower your hand. The chat will not be monitored for questions or comments on agenda items. Use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen to participate. The moderator will call your name or your phone number if joining by phone to speak. BCTV will invite you to turn on your video and unmute your microphone. Please identify yourself when you act, when you speak or ask a question and name the road you live on. After you're done speaking, please stop your video and mute your microphone. So thank you all for attending. We have a lot of people and a long agenda to get through in two hours. So whoever is speaking should please be as brief as possible. The agenda is as follows. First, the select board will present and briefly discuss the articles in the town meeting warning. We will hold questions on the articles until after their presentation with with the exception of Article seven about the library expansion. When we'll stop and discuss and take questions as soon as it's presented before going on to the rest of the articles. We hope the total time for the articles and Q and A will be about 45 minutes. Traditionally, at the end of the select board portion, that's the time for announcements and we'll have a brief one from Jody Hauser about the Friends of the Library raffle. Next, we'll hear a brief legislative report from Representative Sarah Coffey with time for a few questions. 15 minutes max, we hope. Next, we will hear from candidates running for town offices. And I'm asking for, excuse me, my dog has got a cone on her head and she's making noise. She's banging around by my feet. Because of the time pressure, I would ask that only candidates for contested offices speak. I mean, I'll go through the other offices after the select board section is done and see if anybody, if there are any write-ins. But if there are no write-ins, I hope that people who are running for uncontested offices will not ask to speak because of time pressure. So, so, so the select board section will be the five candidates for the two contested select board seats. Since there's now a write-in candidate, Tarachini, for the three-year term. We will hear from the candidates in the order they are listed on the warning. Michael Becker followed by Jason Herron followed by Tarachini. Then we'll hear from Zion Estes and Lynn King. Each candidate will have two minutes to make their statements. Once all the candidates have spoken, there will be time for questions. Two minutes is suggested. You know, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to cut you off. There will be time for questions. First, we'll take one question for Michael Becker. Then one question for Jason Herron and so on through the order. We hope we can get through this section in 45 minutes to an hour because of all the, you know, the rest of the agenda. There's still a lot more after this. After a question to a candidate is asked, BCTV will look, this is important and it's, it may be sound frustrating, but it's the only way we can get, you know, equal questions to everybody. After a question to a candidate is asked, BCTV will lower everyone's hands and I'll ask for questions for the next candidate in line. At which point, people with a question for that candidate should raise their hand. This may sound cumbersome, but given the technology, it's the only way we can make sure of all candidates getting equal time during the Q and A. Questions should be civil and respectful. Please remember that everyone at this meeting is here because they care about the town, even if we disagree. And remember that this is not a debate between the candidates or between you and the candidates, but a chance for us to get to know them better by hearing from them. After the candidate section, you know, I'll ask if there are any write-ins for the other town offices. And then we'll hear from any candidate present who's running for the Wyndham Southeast School District who wishes to speak. I think Lana Dever has expressed an interest in doing this. We haven't heard from any, any other candidates. After the school board section is a brief report from our WSESD representative Sean Murphy about what's going on in the school district. Finally, we will have a presentation from Beth Bristol about the year at the Guilford Central School. Beth is a member of the School Leadership Council. Okay, let's get started. Select Board, you're up.
Hi, I'm Richard Wazansky, Chair of the Guilford Select Board. I live on Packer Corners Road. And I, before I read the first article, I'd like to thank the Broadbrook Grange for co-hosting this free town meeting with the Select Board. Thank you very much. Article one, shall the town vote to approve highway fund expenditures in the amount of $995,923 for fiscal year July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, for which revenues will be raised through taxes and other sources? And the statute that is quoted here is 17 VSA 2664. This is, this is usually how we begin with the first article. And I can tell you that the highway budget is mostly level funded. There were many reductions on individual line items. The biggest reductions overall were in insurance expenses. However, due to the impacts of COVID-19, several line items also increased. The primary increases were in gravel and sand due to local pits running low on material and needing to travel further to secure supplies. Impacts of the Emerald Ash Bora, as well as increased costs for professional arborists, caused tree removal to also increase. Lastly, truck parts and supplies for repairs saw an increase due to COVID-19 supply shortages. And with that, I will accede to Zion Estes, who's going to read Article two.
Good evening. My name is Zion Estes and I live on Yaw Road. I will be reading Article two, which is, shall the town vote to approve general fund expenditures in the amount of $860,182 for the fiscal year July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, for which revenues will be raised through taxes and other sources? And the statute is 17 VSA 2664. And much like Richard's statement about notes about the article, this is essentially a level-funded budget. The select board worked to find efficiencies and reduce the number of costs. And most of those decreases were in individual line items. And they all had an impact in the end. Some of these included delinquent tax administration expenses, numerous supplies and travel expenses. And two social service agencies are no longer requesting funds. But due to the impacts of COVID-19, there were also a number of increases. And these increases were primarily around technology fees and the cost of goods and supplies. Additionally, due to the retirement of the town's previous attorney, legal fees increased a bit this year for next year in the budget. And lastly, the town is statutorily required to have an animal control officer. And not having found a suitable candidate for almost four years, the Select Board agreed to contract with Wyndham County Sheriff for a professional animal control officers. These expenses were offset by cutting the traffic enforcement contract with the Vermont State Police. And I will cede it now to Rusty to read Article three.
Okay, Article three is, shall the town vote to continue membership in the Wyndham Regional Commission and raise and appropriate the sum of $5,109 to defray the town's share of its expense? Its Wyndham Regional Commission provides essential services and assistance to towns due to the absence of county government in Vermont. The town receives far more benefit from their work than these small fees cover. Their works cover a broad range of areas that include, but are not limited to economic development, preserving the natural beauty of Vermont, obtaining and maintaining efficiency in government spending, safeguarding and extending local autonomy and emergency planning. That's the end of Article three. I will cede it to Michael Becker now.
Hey there. This is Michael Becker. I live on Stage Road. And I will be reading Article four. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,363 for southeastern Vermont economic development strategies? Seven. The final year of petitioning for seven BDCC. They assist with programming of BUHS as well as assistance to small businesses and/or those looking to start small businesses. I will turn it over to Veranda for Article five.
Hi, I'm Veranda Posh. I live on the, on Packer Corners Road. And my article is, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $243,100 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department? As with every year, this is the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department's annual appropriations request from the town to fund them for the services that they provide. Note that it is an increase of $4,650 over last year. Perhaps later, a volunteer fire department representative will want to speak more to this. You can find more information about the Guilford Fire Department's activities on page 34 and page 35 of Guilford's Town Report. So I'll yield the floor to Richard Wazansky for Article six.
Richard, are you there? You're muted, Richard.
Thank you. I'll start again. Article six, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department Capital Improvements Fund? The Guilford Volunteer Fire Department is the pressing funds for their capital improvement fund for their facility. And there, there may be someone from the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department staff who would like to speak to that in, who is participating in this pre-town meeting. And now I shall cede it to Michael.
Okay, Article seven. Shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize the construction of improvements to the Guilford Free Library to include modifications to the existing structure and connecting the rear addition to the main library building to preserve most of the facade and exterior features of the existing building in an approximate amount of $11,033,000 with an amount not to exceed $205,000 to be financed over a period not to exceed 30 years, subject to available grants and aid? And shall the town reallocate to this project an additional $195,000 in funds held with the Vermont Bond Bank originally allocated to a water project, which was funded through other means?
Okay, as I noted in the introduction, we will take questions and comments and from the library people and from the public. So I'm looking for, I am not seeing, okay, M. Wisman. You're up. Can you unmute?
Hi, my name's Mary Wisman. I live on Slate Rock Road. I have a couple of, I'm just not, I don't understand where the money is coming from. So on your pie chart, I see the town of Guilford borrowing, pending approval, $205,000. Also, in another section, I believe it was orange, town of Guilford capital improvements, coming from the capital improvements fund, $323,000. And I guess my, my question is, I can flip back. My question is, in the capital fund, it says transfer in from general fund, $225,000. Is that connected to the library funds?
Do we have a, Kathy, Kathy Wilken? You need to unmute. And, and please turn on your video.
Sorry about that video. Every year, the Select Board puts transfers $225,000 to the capital fund for the capital fund improvement. And it's a rolling, a rolling fund, but that appears every year. It's a, one, it's a transfer that happens. And Peterson may be explaining that, but it happens every year.
So I understand that, which I would love to have changed, but that's changed, but that's for a different time. I'm wondering if that $225,000 is going towards our library?
I hope so.
So then below that, there are a number of other bridge expense, highway, this isn't a capital fund. Highway needs for $163,000. The bridge expense is $13,000. The Old Town Hall, $900. The town office expense, $5,000. Those things are all in parentheses and they're in the deficit. So I feel like those are needs, those are things that the town needs versus I'm all for helping to build a, you know, an addition, an addition, a small addition for this little town right now on a library, on our beautiful old library. I'm all for that, but I'm just worried that we're kind of doing what my mom and dad always said not to do. I have to get my needs and wants in order. That's my concern. Could you also speak to the town of Guilford reallocating the funds, the $195,000?
Kathy?
Thank you. The $195,000, as explained to me, was appropriated many years ago to fund water needs in Algiers Village. And then the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust was able to locate some other money. That money had been bonded and could not be spent for anything else. So when the library project came up, it was suggested, I wish by me, that that money could be transferred or reallocated to the library and it wouldn't have to be borrowed as part of the bond. Because it's already bonded and it's already in the bank. That's the 195.
So you're looking to have that approved?
Let me give someone else a chance to speak.
Absolutely.
Okay, Lynn King? You have need to unmute.
Yes, I just did. Actually, I would have liked to have heard, I've, I have the same questions that Ms. Wisman was just asking. I'd like to pose either, whether it be Peter Rude or Richard Wazansky, where I'm hearing, I would like clarity on these funds. So for instance, the 195, we know it was connected to the water that was brought into town. But the figure in the 300,000, I, and I'd like Ms. Wisman to correct me if I'm misstating her question. But I heard, were those funds appropriated specifically at the time of transfer? Like, do we have a, whether it's called a general ledger, do we have an account that is designated for library funds? So when we pull from the capital funds, is this coming from what might have been for the greater expense for the highway? I think that's what I'm hearing is, are these funds broken down into different sections? And I respect Ms. Wilken's reply, but I would like to hear these answers coming from either the Select Board or Peter Rude, someone who is actually handing these funds, handling the funds. And Mary Wisman, if you could correct me if that is not clear, but I'm supporting your questions as I want the same answers.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anyone from the Select Board. Peter's hand raised, Sheila Morse has got her hand raised and I think she can answer. She's on the Finance Advisory Committee.
Yes, but she's advisory. I would, I would like the people who are.
Well, no one else, no one else has their hand up, so I'm going to.
Aren't we as taxpayers, are we not allowed to hear that from our town government? This is the clarity that we, the community, want.
Richard has his hand up.
Richard has his hand up? Okay, Richard, do you have your hand up? I don't see it. Okay, go ahead.
So the, 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 the capital plan was first developed in 1990s. And it was about equipment to begin with in Guilford. And in either 2003 or 2005, we can't determine exactly what year it was, the Select Board created a capital improvement fund by a special article, which is, which, which was approved by the voters of the town of Guilford. In 2009, the Select Board expanded it to include maintenance for town-owned buildings. In 2017 to 2018, the, the capital improvement plan was adopted by the town. Every year, the town puts, it takes from the general, transfers from the general fund into the capital improvements fund. The capital improvements fund has, has lines that are sources and uses. Where is the money coming from and where is the money going? And included in that is the library, bridges, the historical society, et cetera. So those funds, there were funds designated in the capital improvement plan for originally for maintenance to the library because the library needs a lot of new maintenance, including windows replaced, a new furnace, and so forth. Does that answer your question?
So it sounds like there, so Richard, respectfully, I'm just clarifying. So there's nothing, there are no general ledger account numbers, like we don't have the highway, the library, you know, all, all of what the town oversees. They're, they're not in ledgers. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Well, I'm, that's why I'm clarifying.
Didn't we send you the audit?
I have, well, I have the, I have this which breaks down the funds.
I'm going to call Connie Burton and then Sheila Morse. Connie, can you unmute?
Yes, I was just trying to get my little clicker there. Okay. Yes, I, I have a, I did do my, oh, my video, who you want that on to? Okay. I have a question about the library and the interest in putting in this new addition. But I wondered if the Select Board had considered using funds instead of in the library, instead of using so many funds in the library, of doing something with the Guilford Meeting House, which is in sad need of repair and really if something isn't done, it, it can't be used for anything. It'll just sort of fall down as far as I'm concerned. And I know the outside, a lot of work was done on that recently, fairly recently. But I was wondering why, instead of taking on the task of improving the meeting house, so many funds were projected towards the library?
Sheila, are you still, I don't see your hand. I don't see your icon, but are you still, is your hand still up? Sheila?
Yeah, okay. So I just want to very briefly say that the capital improvements funds is, is to cover improvements and maintenance to the town assets, which include the library, the garage, the town office, not the Grange and not the meeting house. And there is a rolling five-year plan for those maintenance and improvement issues. And the libraries' needs were identified several years ago before the library, the whole library expansion and improvement plan. So that money was set aside over years for anticipated needs so that the town could avoid going into debt. And that is apart from any other source of funding and has always been a set, set aside by the town. And I just wanted to clarify that that is not part of debt and it's not related to the meeting house and it's not relating to other non-town asset buildings. So I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, Dan Collet?
Yeah, thank you, Rick. First, I definitely want to state, I do believe the library brings a great service to the town. Kathy Wilken has been a tremendous steward of the library and library resources to residents. Thank you, Kathy. I do, I have however, been concerned with the transparency surrounding this project, particularly the significant cost. I appreciate the ad details and response to questions on the FAQ document, but believe more needs to be explained. $312,000 was set aside for library renovations and maintenance. That seems like a reasonable amount. This was funded, just in the words of Sheila, to avoid going into debt. But now we're asking to borrow and take additional funds to fund a project that's going to increase the scope of size and size of the library to four times its current footprint. This seems a little excessive to me. To my knowledge, there was really, really no discussion about the reallocation of the 195,000 from the AVFD water project outside of the library. It seems like it was instantly earmarked for this project. There's been no discussion about where additional funding would come from if the project exceeds budget. We don't have data about additional operating costs. There's a ton of unknowns. As I've listened in the Select Board meetings, I hear detailed scrutiny of expenditures for funds to the Road Commission and other funds like that. There's already been $22,000 spent towards architects, et cetera, when this project hasn't been approved. I mean, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, it's a little outstanding. The demand data, while significant, doesn't accurately assess how many residents actually utilize library services. It seems like a small portion of the town uses a library service, the library a significant amount. It's great to have a library.
Dan, excuse me, are you almost done?
Almost done, almost done. Thank you. It's great to have a library in town, but the scope of this project is overwhelming when it seems funds could be utilized elsewhere to benefit the larger community as a whole. In challenging times like these, I think we need to spend responsibly. I don't think a taking a initial loan for a bond falls in that category. Thank you.
Okay, Peter, is your hand still up? Richard?
Yes, I just wanted to speak to a couple of things. The, the meeting house is one. We had architects come into the meeting house to see whether it was viable to put a library in there and they did a very thorough investigation. The meeting house has no, no, no plumbing facilities. The space does not give itself to being designed interiorly as a library. And their recommendation was that this was not suitable for a library. In regard to the $195,000 and other matters, the Select Board decided to ask the town, we were, we were told at a meeting with the bond bank that there was $195,000. And we, we decided to put that on the, as an article on the town, on the town agenda. And we, we decided to put that on the, as an article on the town, on the town agenda. And so, the same as the library, this is not a done deal. We want the town of Guilford to decide whether they want to spend this amount of money on this, on an addition. If they don't, so be it. And, and that's very understandable. Nothing has been done except the feasibility study, which was mostly grant-funded. And there was, you know, 20,000 plus that the Select Board approved to this, to our excellent consultant to go further because we hadn't, because we needed to get further along in the design and further along on cost estimating. So the initial grant was paid for archaeological studies, for environmental stuff.
Hello, excuse me. I, I'm not trying to be rude here, but I keep trying to start my audio and my video. And he keeps saying the host is kicking me out. Is anybody else experiencing this?
No.
No. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and start the video here, and it keeps saying that the host is not allowing me in.
Can you wait to be called on, please?
Yeah, no, I was, I was just trying to experience the meeting just as everybody else was, that's all. I apologize.
So in summary, what the point I'm making mostly is that the Select Board believes that this decision is up to the residents of the town of Guilford. And their vote will determine whether the money will be borrowed and, and whether the addition to the library will be built.
Okay, Hannah Tustin.
All right, good evening. My name is Hannah Tustin. I'm a resident of the town of Guilford. Um, I'm still a little bit confused about when the capital funds were officially allocated for this project. And, because I understood Mr. Wazansky explaining that the capital funds were for maintenance of town of Guilford infrastructure. And this feels like it's an improvement to town of Guilford infrastructure. So just wondering if somebody could clarify that for me?
Can someone answer that question? Peter Rude? Richard?
Hold on, there's a lot of buttons to be switched here. So the, when the, when the feasibility studies determined that it was feasible to, to add an addition onto the library in that space, the Select Board thought it was reasonable to use the funds they had put aside for maintenance to put them towards the addition if the town approves the addition.
Okay, I'm hoping we can get through this. I'm gonna call on Sarah Emmons, Barbara Belcher-Timmy, and Anna or John Klein. Sarah, Emmons, you're up.
Hi, I'm Emma's College Highway. Can, we just confirm that, I believe it's $312,000 has been pulled from the capital fund already? And the question is whether or not this goes into the addition versus into, I think, what we're, what we're calling improvements. That's already happened, right?
I think we're back to you, Richard. If you understood the question, I, I didn't, but. You're mute, you're muted, Richard.
That is correct. That money was taken from the money in the capital improvement plan that was put aside for the library to pay the additional $26,000.
Um, now, I'm sorry, I'm going through the meetings, and it looks like we're on schedule to pay for a new grader next year. Is that correct as well? And that would come from the same funds?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, and I think according to the minutes, that is in the ballpark of $340,000. So if we're pulling 312 for the library, 340 for the grader, that leaves us with about $16,000 in the capital fund?
Peter, do you want to check that over?
All right, hopefully you guys can hear me. So they, as was shared previously, the capital improvement fund is replenished every year with the approval of the budget by town voters. So the, the $312,000, $150,000 of that was set aside in 2018 by the Select Board. Pulled from that, the 225,000 during that year. And then the following year, the additional amount was set aside. And those funds are currently sitting in the reserve fund earmarked for those purposes. Ms. Emmons, yes, you are correct. The town is scheduled to purchase a new grader in the upcoming fiscal year. But the funds for that will come out of the funding of the capital fund with the approval of this budget. Does that help you?
Are you muted?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Also. I don't think I'm.
No, no.
Yeah, I think, just want to clarify, Select Board meeting, last floor meeting, we pulled $31,000.
So Sarah, you're.
$31,000 for the, go ahead.
You're, you're breaking up. We can't, we can't understand you. Barbara, or Timmy? Sorry, Sarah. Barbara, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, but I, they say I can't do my, the coast will ask you to start your video. Oh, there I am. Okay, I, I just want to say I'm very satisfied with this conversation. I've learned a lot about the library, and I think it would be really good for us to move on. We have a ton of things to cover. So I would suggest we move on if at all possible.
I, I endorse that thought. I'd said I would call on Anna Klein and John Shaw. And then Jason Heron is, hopefully will be the last speaker. So John or Anna, you're up.
Hi, hi, this is John Shaw, East Mountain Road. I, I think I was trying, I was hoping to respond to some people, but I think what I'd like to say is that.
You're on the library board.
Oh, I'm also on the library board. But I'd like to say that I think that it's important for us to think about the library project as its own, that library project has been in the works for many years. And it's its own kind of entity that's different than the, than the financial stuff that we're talking about. And so I guess I would just worry that that when we are trying to question the town financing of the library, that it's.
Bleeding into this.
Like spreading, like I'd like the, the, to me, the library project is valid by itself. And then the funding is a separate question. I guess that's what I'd like to say.
Okay, okay, Jason, you're up.
Hi, my name is Jason Heron. I live on Lakewood Road. The $195,000 is kind of a concern of mine. Richard is the chairman of the Select Board. He's also a treasurer and trustee of the library. This $195,000 that was discovered by the bond bank and told Peter Rude about it. Why was Peter Rude, Richard Wazansky, the bond bank, and Isaac Wagner the only people in the conversation about these funds? And how, why was the library the only discussion for these $195,000? You know, why wasn't this put out to the public?
Richard, you want to answer?
Yes, so we had the meeting with the bond bank woman. We were very surprised to learn about that $195,000. The library project was, we were already looking to how we were going to fund the project. And it's, and, and it simply occurred to us that we should ask the town if they wanted to put this $195,000 toward the library addition. It doesn't, and if the town says no, that that's the answer. I mean, it's very simple. There was no collusion, there's no, there's no conflict of interest. It was just simply that we thought that this would be a good idea to see whether the town was interested in this find that we found of $195,000. And the, and we ran it by the Finance Advisory Committee as well.
Okay, can we move on to Article Eight with? If, if.
Okay, are we ready for Article Eight?
Yes, rest me.
Okay. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,030 for the following human services organizations? The youth services, $1,605. Women's Freedom Center, $1,000. Groundworks Collaborative, $1,000. Visiting Nurse and Hospice for New Hampshire and Vermont, $6,300. Retired Senior Volunteer Program, $485. Senior Solutions, $850. Brattleboro Area Hospice, $300. The Gathering Place, $500. Brattleboro Senior Meals, $350. Age Pro- AIDS Project of Southern Vermont, $350. The, the Mover Bus, $250. Guilford Cares, $6,000. And SEBCA, $2,040. These agencies helped the community. Guilford Cares successfully completed their petition for increased funding in 2021 and are now back on the list permanent. I see to Zan Estes.
All right, hello, Zan Estes again. Article nine, shall the town collect its taxes through the treasurer without discount? Interest at 1% per month or fraction thereof will be charged after October 15th. This is a standard article that's required by Vermont State statute. It never changes. I see to Veranda for Article 10.
Okay, Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Guilford vote to advise the Select Board to become a compassionate community as articulated in the International Charter for Compassion? The Select Board was approached in 2021 by compassionate Brattleboro representatives to consider becoming a compassionate community. There was an article about this in the Guilford Gazette. The Select Board felt that this was a decision that should be informed by the will of the voters. And so we are turning to you to guide that decision.
Okay, now we will take questions and comments on the articles, hopefully except Article Seven, the library. But if you have questions or comments about any of the other articles, please speak up. Barbara Belcher-Timmy?
Hi, everyone. I just want to say I agree with all of this. I don't think we're giving them enough, frankly, but I support all of that. And I also hope that we will not accuse each other of nefarious intentions across the board here. We're neighbors and we're all doing the best we can.
Hannah Tustin. Did you want to speak, Hannah? You're muted.
I'd like to understand what the commitment to being a compassionate community means to the town of Guilford.
Can someone address that?
I can. This is Veranda. And being a compassionate community, community imposes no requirements on the community as a whole. Nationally, I mean, state, within the state of Vermont and across the United States and also in different countries of the world, there are communities that have chosen to affiliate with certain values of mutual aid. We have many examples in Guilford of, of mutual assistance that take place just because this is what people want to do. This is not an organized requirement. It's just a commitment on the town of, from the people in the town to want to recognize that, that compassion toward others and mutual assistance is something that we as a town believe in. Some, some towns reach out to have like sister towns in different places. I wanted to refer you back to the article in the Guilford Gazette, just to save some time here. The last Gazette had an article that was by, basically by Lisa Sparrow, who had been the pastor of the Guilford Church, explaining it in her own words. And that that was, she was one of the two people who came to the Select Board to present that. But this is no obligation to the town. And if anybody wants to know more about it, they can just email me and I'll send them a lot more information about it.
And Beth Bristol?
Thank you. Good evening, Beth Bristol from Lowry Road. I'm also the treasurer of the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department. I just wanted to speak to the two articles in reference to the fire department budget. I think it was mentioned that the increase this year is $4,650. That represents a 1.81% increase this year. The few line items that it represents is communications and dispatching services have increased. And then, of course, fuel increases, which I think we can all recognize. And then secondly, the capital budget. We just received year number two of the capital budget, the $35,000 allocation. So we now have a balance of $70,000 in our capital budget fund, primarily to be used for roofing, trim work, and then replacing flooring in both the station and the apparatus floor.
John Klein? Anna Klein?
It's John Shaw. It's not, we're not, we're not related.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say I'm so psyched that everybody's so excited about Guilford politics. I'm on East Mountain Road. I just wanted to speak to Article Four, the CEV Ed's Southeast Vermont Economic Development Strategies article. This is the last year, I think, before it enters the big lump of funding items. And so I wanted to draw like special attention to it. While I see all the great work that BDCC does in our communities, I, I guess I want to bring up a main point that they, that we brought up in the past. I think John brought up at town meeting a few years ago, that their revenue over expenses, meaning their extra money that they have is continually increasing and meaning they don't need our money. So that, and in fact, during the pandemic, so fiscal year 21, they had $833,954 revenue over expenses. And the CEV Ed's expenses, so the, the amount that they needed to run their programming was $152,710. So that's even, they made almost over $300,000 more in fiscal year 21 than they did the previous year. So, you know, I understand that maybe this is like they need some gesture of support from the towns, but they don't need the money. And so if we're questioning where our, you know, taxpayer money is going, I would say this would be a big article to say, you know, we can support this, you know, the work they're doing, but let's not give them money if they don't need it.
Okay, Greg Urban?
Thank you.
Hi, this is Greg Urban.
You're getting an echo. Is there somebody with a computer next to you?
Yeah, it's, sorry, it's my wife. She wouldn't, she didn't want me to log in underneath her. She wanted to be separate. So I, I just had a question about the 1% raise of the 1% in, you know, fine, I guess, for late fee on the, on real estate taxes, if that's correct?
Okay, is that your question? Okay, can somebody answer that from the town? Why is it 1%? And how is that figure assessed? Yeah. Here we go. You're on, Zahn, you're on. Okay, all right, thank you. I, I, I don't think this is about real estate taxes. I think this is property taxes that are due to the town. It's a standard, this is what, the practice that Guilford has used for years. So it's, I don't think it's about, I'm not sure I understood your question. I don't think it's the right question. This is about collecting taxes that are due to the Town of Guilford. Is this about?
Right, I just, I guess, is this a fine or is this, it's a penalty, right? It's a 1% penalty for, for the late fee, basically.
Yes.
And is that like, is that a normal nationwide practice or, I mean?
Hmm, I can't speak to whether it's a normal nationwide practice. I can, all I can say, what I understand, because it's been done in Guilford for years.
Okay.
And it's used successfully here by our town clerk. And, and many people, including me, have been on that delinquent list.
No, I won't. Right, okay. I didn't know if I was on that list, so I'm just gonna add.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Lynn King, you're up. Linda, do you want to speak? You're muted.
Now?
Now you can, now you're not unmuted.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to, it's a comment, but for all to hear. I want to thank Anna Klein for sharing so much information about Article Four with us. Much appreciated. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, I see no other hands raised. So I think we're done with the Articles section of the pre-town meeting. Where there's a, a section in, in the real town meeting called Other Business. And under Other Business, I think we have a, a, an announcement from Jody Hauser about the library raffle. And if there are any other important announcements, we will listen to those afterwards.
Yeah.
Kathy, do you want to speak for Jody?
I'm here.
Oh, Jody, go.
Hi. So it's that time of year, we're raising or doing a raffle for Send a Kid to Camp. It's a $10 raffle that supports some local businesses in Guilford and some restaurants. There'll be three drawings this year of gift certificates for at least $100, if not more. It's the money goes directly into the summer programming and it provides free camp for any kid in Guilford, as well as breakfast and snack and lunch if they need it. And also just keep your dates open for June 11th. We're gonna have a fundraising concert. The rear defrosters are gonna play at the fairgrounds. So that, there are more information from that. But if you want to purchase a raffle ticket, you can find, go online. You can go to the library or you can find friends of the library or a trustee. And all of our names are on the website. So that's, that's it. Come support a local kid. Thanks.
Thank you, Jody. Kathy, did you have an announcement?
I do. It's the town report and I do unfortunately have two errors and omissions. The first is on page 12 of all things. The library, the library appropriation or amount in the, in the Select Board budget is not level funded. It's 40,125,18. That's on page 12. On page 73, Peter Hannan did resign from the Cemetery Commission and Judith Serkin took his place on the Cemetery Commission and is running this year for reelection to the Cemetery Commission. And the Cemetery Commission meets at 9:30 in the morning, not nine o'clock on whatever day is, is listed in here. But that's all. We're getting much, much fewer errors in admission, many fewer.
Thank you, Kathy. And I just want to thank the auditors for all their work on the town report every year. Okay, with that, we will move on to Sarah Coffey's presentation on the legislature, on the legislature. Sarah, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Glad to be here. So greetings from Montpelier. Thanks for the invitation to speak tonight at pre-town meeting to share an update from the legislature. I have to say, town meeting is one of my favorite annual events. It's a, I see it as a forum where everyone is welcome to speak their minds and engage in civic dialogue as we review budgets and respectfully debate the issues with our neighbors. And I'm really looking forward to next year when, where we can resume our in-person town meeting tradition and when I can share this update in person on Town Meeting Day. So on, just want to let folks know that on January 18th, we return to working in person at the State House. That is, the House did. And the Senate will be returning after the town meeting break. And after two years of working remotely, I'm so happy to be working back under the Golden Dome with my colleagues following strict COVID protocols in the State House and are working in a hybrid model, which is enabling us to do our work safely and without interruption. And right now, we are about nearly halfway through the 2022 legislative session. Just to remind folks, we meet from, we're a citizen legislature. We meet for 18 weeks, starting in January, and we generally go almost till the end of May. And with this year being the second year of the biennium, we're working at a fast pace to bring many of our priority bills across the finish line before March crossover, which is on March 11th. So I wanted to share some of those highlights. And I wanted to say that my priorities this session have been deeply informed by listening to my constituents. During the summer and fall, I spent a lot of time meeting with constituents, community groups, legislative colleagues, and preparation for the 2022 session. You know, I did this through my, my monthly coffee hours and various community meetings. And I've heard from a lot of you about your concerns around the pandemic, around childcare, around workforce, around education and school, housing, healthcare and more. And I just want you to know, I've been listening and I've been carrying your voices with me into my work and with my colleagues in the State House. And so we, we're, we know that we're facing a number of long-range challenges that can't be solved in a single session. But with the arrival of one-time federal dollars, we are hoping to make meaningful progress to boost our recovery and set us on a path for a strong economic future. And I will continue to focus on strengthening our rural economy, ensuring access to quality and affordable childcare, creating more affordable housing, improving rural broadband, addressing, addressing equity in education, protecting our environment, reforming our criminal justice system, and taking steps to address climate change. This session, I've numbered, I've introduced a number of bills aiming to address many of these issues. And, and you can find, and you can find all of those bills. It's a pretty long list. On my, on, each of, each legislator has a page on our legislative website. And I can drop that address into the chat if I'm allowed to do that. If I'm given access to do that. And I wanted to let folks know that, you know, while so many of the things that we do hit the headlines, most of our work happens in our committees. And in the House, we serve on one committee and I serve on the House Corrections and Institutions Committee. It's both a money committee and a policy committee. The money part is that we focus on the capital budget, which deals with the non-transportation infrastructure in our state and also on corrections policy. And this biennium, I was appointed as the vice chair of that committee. One of the many things our committee is, has been doing over the last several weeks is making recommendations on how we spend the federal ARPA dollars on some capital infrastructure projects. And my focus is always, I use the lens of using this one-time money to make transformational investments that will reach my communities, to better support our towns and our communities. Because we know that we're facing a lot of challenges. I'm also the co-chair of the Women's Legislative Caucus and I participate in the Rural Caucus. Where through those caucuses, I've been advocating strongly for advancing affordable childcare, a number of issues around women in the workforce and strengthening our rural economy by making some strategic investments. I think I'll, in a way, I'll stop there. And I just want folks to know that I'm committed to communication and transparency with my constituents. The improved technology at the State House has enabled Vermonters to have increased access to our work. So you can watch us in real time. Or you could also, all of our committees and floor sessions are also on our YouTube channel. And I can also put that link in the chat. I also send out monthly newsletters. And during the week, I also post regularly on my legislative Facebook page on how I'm voting on key bills and the issues that I'm working on and some behind-the-scenes photos of my work, which I hope you find fun. And if you'd like to be added to my email newsletter, just shoot me an email and I'll do that. Or you can go to my website and you can add your name to my mailing address. And during the session and through the summer, I can, I continue to host my monthly coffee with coffee hours. They happen on the third Saturday of each month from 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. And they, we're, I'm hoping that we will be able to resume them in person soon, but, soon. But for now, they're on Zoom. And I also post those links on my Facebook page and on front places like Front Porch Forum and like the Guilford Facebook page. So I just want to close and say that, you know, this pandemic has left an indelible mark on all of us. And I want to acknowledge that the challenges are, persist. But when I opened the most recent edition of the Guilford Gazette and the Town Report, I was, I was filled with such gratitude and pride to, to, to live in Guilford when I saw all the good work and the acts of kindness happening in our community. I know it takes a lot of work by a lot of people, a lot of volunteer power to make small towns like ours work and thrive. And, you know, I just want to acknowledge the work of these, of these volunteers who make Guilford such a special and wonderful place to live and work. So as always, please reach out with any questions or concerns about whether it's you have a problem at the DMV or whether you have a question or concern about issues that we're going to be debating in the House. So please, I'm, I'm here to help and I'm available. So thank you for your time tonight. And I, I don't know how, how we're doing on time, Rick, but I'm happy to take questions.
If, if there are a couple of questions for Sarah, before we go to the Select Board candidates' presentations, we can, we can hear them? Seeing none, let's go to the candidates for Select Board. And as I said, after the Select Board candidates have done their presentations and Q and A, I'll ask if there are any other write-ins or, you know, candidates who want to speak for other town offices? And hopefully, there won't be any. So first up is Michael Becker with a statement of his candidacy.
Hey. I'm Michael Becker. I'm on the Select Board now, just finishing up my first three-year term. I'm running for the three-year term again. I live out on Stage Road in Green River Village. I've lived here about four years. I got involved with Select Board about a year after moving to town at the time. I was unopposed, no one else was interested. So I thought it'd be a good way to get to know people and that has been the case. I've met a lot of nice people and enjoyed the experience of being a select person so far. There are moments that are challenging, for sure, no doubt. Let's see, I, I think I'll get right into it. Couple of the reasons I'm running. For Select Board is I just would like to give back to the community. I believe in volunteering and community service. I think I have a, a number of personality characteristics that lend itself to, towards being helpful on the Select Board. I offer a calm presence. I'm also a business owner. I think that is helpful. I, I think I bring a sense of fiscal responsibility towards towards the Select Board. And I just, I think I'll just mention that my philosophy towards life and my approach with the Select Board is to remain humble, keep a sense of humor, keep your mind open to different viewpoints and be welcoming to people from all walks of life. I wrote down a few of my goals if I were to be elected. The top goals that come to mind. Our fiscal responsibility, listening and responding to the concerns of citizens, supporting our hard-working staff and commission members, maintaining our facilities and infrastructure, protecting our environment and supporting our schools. And I just try to remember that fundamentally is the Select Board's responsibility to work in the best interest of the town. I wrote down a few of the accomplishments that I, I feel good about during my tenure that I've been a part of. Thought it would be helpful to run down a few of those. The renovations to the town garage, I've worked closely with the Highway Department. It's been a very rewarding experience just to collaborate with town staff. And I would encourage folks to go check it out. It's something I think we can all be very proud of and it was done in a fiscally responsible way. I'm very happy that we were able to keep the building and, and work with a building that was built by volunteer labor, labor many years ago. It, it looks great. It was in dire need of some improvements. I'm really happy with how it came out and I think we did it in a cost-effective way. I am pleased about the new approach with the animal control situation that we've, we've dealt with over the years. That, that has been challenging in the past, but I'm, I think our partnership with the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department is something that we, it's so far so good. And I'm pleased that it worked out that way. And I think that's a, a good success story. The pedestrian cyclist corridor scoping study is something that I'm personally excited about. And, you know, I, who knows what that'll come to, but I think it's an important study in Guilford Center. I think the formation of the Finance Advisory Committee also is something that has been very helpful and I'm pleased that that committee exists. And I think I'll, I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jason Heron, you're up.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jason Heron and I live on Lakewood Road. I grew up in Vernon and graduated from Brattleboro Union High School. My parents are John and Susan Heron. My father started at Vermont Yankee as an assistant operator right out of the Navy. My mom was on the Vernon School Board and served on the Parent Teachers Association. The path that led me here today was only taken because I wanted to share the Constitution with my neighbors. That's all. I've become fascinated with it and I cannot understand for the life of me why it wasn't taught any of it during all of my years in the public education system. So I started hosting a study group that goes through the basic fundamental principles of the Constitution and some really interesting history surrounding it. A member of that study group was a volunteer on the Town Planning Commission. After class, she told me about an issue she had with the After class, she told me about an issue she had with the Select Board. She said the board had terminated the entire Volunteer Planning Commission without notice, only days before the plan was to be submitted and by certified mail. I started investigating, and what I saw blew me away. So I started sharing everything I found with other community members. The thing is, is I don't have enough time to get into the issues surrounding the Planning Commission or the conflict of interest the Select Board Chair has with the library project in these two minutes I've been allotted here. I need to make public aware of an email that is going around town about me that is titled "Jason Heron Must Be Defeated." It is written by a Guilford resident, and attached to that email are the names of over 100 current and former residents of Guilford. In this email, the author accuses me of promoting white supremacy. The author and I have never met. I'm not naive, but this is Guilford, Vermont. I can't believe someone would resort to these tactics to try and prevent me from serving my neighbors on the Select Board. However, the thing that really shocked me were the names attached to that email. There are two current Select Board members and my state representative attached to it. One of the Select Board members responded in this email chain and said she agreed with the author. I have also never met this person. My state representative, Sarah Coffey, is also attached, and she has publicly thanked the author of this email for previous help on her political campaign. I wish I could have filled this time with all the things I'd like to do to help our town, like making sure our seniors aren't forced out of their homes due to rising property taxes. But this information needed to be exposed first. So I hope I'm given a chance to elaborate on all the rest of it tonight, but we'll just, we'll see how that goes. But I said what I had to say, and I appreciate anyone listening. And yeah, this is going on right here in Guilford.
Jason, can I say something? Is that okay if I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think everything you just said was absolutely amazing. And I'm currently not a Guilford resident, and I want to make that very clear. But my other half is.
Who is speaking, please?
My name is Steve Collins.
Okay, you're not a Guilford resident. Right now, we're just hearing from the Select Board candidates, okay? Until the end, okay? Right now, we're just hearing from the Select Board candidates. So now, Jason, but Michael had several more minutes. If you want to go on for a couple more minutes, that's fine.
I didn't prepare anything. I said what I had to say. You know, I feel like let's just move on, get the other candidates out there, and hopefully, there's a lot of questions, and we can all, we can all ask each other what's going on here. We can talk about the Planning Commission and how they were dissolved, and how the Select Board decided not to notify the public of what their reasons were. And if they do, you know, it's very, there's no details to it. There's no information that's being passed around of why they abolished this entire board. So I'd love for the other Select Board members to say what they have to say. You know my stance on it, and let's, let's have a discussion. Let's get the community involved in this, because that's, that's why I'm running.
Okay, Zahn Eastes, you're up.
I'm sorry, Rick, I just wanted to check with you. Are you, I thought Tara Chaney was going to be invited to speak.
She is, and she will speak after you and Lynn King.
Oh, I see. Okay, fine. All right, thank you. All right, folks, thank you. Hello, everyone. I am Zahn Eastes. I live on Yaw Road off of Weatherhead Hollow Road. I wish to convey this evening that clearly, I'd like to convey clearly that I, on my own steam, seek to be re-elected to the Select Board. I'm at the end of my first two-year term. I believe I am a solid, dependable candidate for the open two-year seat. My prime focus, if I were elected, will be to strengthen Guilford on all fronts. If you know my work in the larger community, you know that I work collaboratively. You know that I build community. I seek a brighter, clearer vision with the people that I work with. The pandemic has challenged us all. There have been so many losses in our community and across the country, and many people still live in continuous struggle. Add to those issues several external pressures like climate change, how we use and conserve our land, housing stresses here in Guilford, and the real cost of getting along. All of this reveals that our community is growing more complex than it once was. I believe in respect for all Guilford citizens. I believe in seeking consensus as we build community by encouraging a broad balance of community voices. The Select Board's first goal states, "Guilford is a welcoming, inclusive, affordable, sustainable community." Starting from that good place, I would seek to advance the Select Board's other aspirations, which are part of our annual goals and vision. Those are to be active, open, and transparent, to work well with town commissions and committees, as well as with our state representative, to foster collaboration among Guilford nonprofits and community organizations, and to advocate for safety, resident, resident safety, excuse me. You can read about my priorities for service in the current Guilford Gazette in a recent reformer article or on a postcard that you probably received recently. But I would like to name just a few of the things I'd like to work on. DV Fiber is a project I'm very proud to have been part of for the last while. We're ahead of schedule, and things are looking great there. I'm committed to working with the Select Board on ARPA funding, making sure that that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity goes well here in Guilford. I'm interested in developing and commit to managing responsible budgets. I also care very much about preserving Guilford's human and natural resources. I'd also like to highlight one area of concern that's around right now, the need for greater openness between the Select Board and the community. I am listening. You can expect me to work on this, and I'm very sincere about that. Thank you.
Lynn King, you're up.
Okay, you can hear me? I'd like to add, before I say what I've written today, I'd like to add a little bit too that I, like Jason, have run into a lot of the accusations of white supremacists. I can sit here and tell you I don't even know where that comes from. And to have that posted by neighbors in the local Browder Road Commons really doesn't feel well. And I too would like to see that our town supports that we should not be treated that way. So I am Lynn Latulip King, and I live on Partridge Road. What I'm going to share, I hope, enlightens a little bit the clarity of where I come from. So what an exciting time to be participating in our local government. It's exciting to see so many people involved and supportive. I'd like to share that my parents immigrated here over 60 years ago, and my brother and I began school without knowing the English language. I'm proud of the life that my parents provided for us. I have served on the Planning Commission for the past four years and enjoyed being a voice for the people and especially for the land. I am now running for the two-year Select Board seat. I'm eager to work closely with the Select Board members with hopes to review town expenditures in order to maintain affordable taxes. Most importantly, my goal is that all residents have an opportunity to be respectfully heard. I also believe our town government should consist of Select Board and committee members with diverse viewpoints. Tonight, I ask for your votes in order to support you, Guilford's future, and my hometown. I do thank you all for your time, and I'm hopeful to serve at the Select Board level. Thank you.
Okay, and Tara Chaney. And Tara, Tara, if you speak, can you let us know if you're running for the two- or three-year seat?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm running for the three-year seat. And I wanted to thank Zahn for being considerate of me and my position in the speaking order. So hello, my name's Tara Chaney. I live on Sweet Pond Road. I'm running as a write-in for the three-year Select Board seat. I'm a lifelong Guilford resident, and I'm a business owner in Guilford. My grandfather, Harvey Cutting, was the road commissioner for 17 years and was on the Guilford Select Board for 12. My Uncle Clayton Cutting was on the Select Board for nine. My family has deep roots here, and we come from strong, hard-working farm families. I want the Guilford residents to know that my intention was to be on the ballot for the three-year seat. I am all about transparency as well as accountability. I'm also about unity, not division. I think there should be a bigger representation of what the voters want. I've been on boards in the past, and I know that people often don't show up due to busy schedules. The climate has changed, and I sense that people want to get involved and know what is going on. People want to have a voice in their town, in this town. We have rules for a reason, and sometimes there are gray areas, but there needs to be consistency and investigation. For the past eight years, I've owned and run an asphalt paving company and construction business with my very hard-working husband. I know what it means to be a woman in a man's world. I know what it means to be a woman in corporate America or a woman that owns a business in a small town. My voice and constitution are strong, and I never back down when I feel that things are unjust. My profession and experience, along with many challenges and successes that come with it, have given me a solid background in many things that the Select Board addresses for the town. I know how to calculate costs, what equipment costs, how jobs are bid, and that the lowest bidder is not always the best choice. I value work ethics, morals, and integrity. My other experiences are in nursing, holistic health, counseling, and healing. This allows me to be an empathetic and compassionate person. I'm a visionary, and I can easily see the whole picture. Communication is key, and being informed is imperative. I will ask questions and expect answers. People are hurting right now. We need to know what the townspeople wants. One of my biggest concerns for the people of Guilford are tax increases. I don't think anyone wants this, especially with inflation affecting every aspect of our wallet. We also do not need to lose rights as businesses and landowners. In 2021, I won a community award presented by the reformer as a remarkable woman in business, as a leader. This was a great honor, as I was voted on by my community, my peers, and my customers, and I had no idea. Our company is also in the running for winning a state award as a woman-owned business. I know that I bring experience, depth, heart, and truth to this position. Therefore, as you are considering your options, I am a write-in for the three-year Select Board seat. I will be a voice for the people. I will listen, and I will advocate. Lastly, I love libraries. But if $195,000 was found, there are other things that Guilford needs as well. For example, internet. When I was on the school board for three years, 10 years ago, we allocated thousands of dollars for Fiber Connect. This was to ensure that the school board, the school had good internet and that the townspeople could also buy in affordably. Internet is crucial to business owners, teachers, and students. Comcast still wants to charge me $23,000 to get good internet to a property on Sweet Pond Road. I think that this is a real problem. So I want to thank you all for your consideration, and I wish you a good evening.
Okay, Tara, I will move you into the group with Michael Becker and Jason Heron. I'm sorry, I didn't do that earlier. All right, now, we're going to have questions for each candidate. We're going to have one question for each candidate at a time. And so if you have a question for Michael Becker, please raise your hand. And after he answers the question, the hands will be lowered, and we'll take a question for Jason Heron, and then Tara Chaney, and so on. So does anyone have a question for Michael Becker? Okay, does anyone have a question for Jason Heron? Well, this is a surprise.
I do. My hand is up.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
I don't have a question. I have a comment and a clarification of Mr. Heron accusing me of a conflict of interest. Before I was, before I was, when I was asked to run for the Select Board, I was a trustee of the library. And I said, I'm a trustee of the library. Can I be a Select Board member? And we did a thorough vetting of that. And according to state statute, it is not a conflict of interest. And folks should remember that I'm a volunteer, and I'm volunteering both for the library and for the Select Board, for the town of Guilford, not some private corporation that would produce a conflict of interest. I am working for the town of Guilford as a volunteer. So legally, there is no conflict of interest whatsoever. And I wish that Mr. Heron would stop saying that.
Okay, hands down, do we have a question for Tara Chaney? Only for Tara Chaney now?
Can I respond to that? I mean, yeah, is that okay?
Okay, this is not a debate. Go ahead and respond, but we've got to.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, he said some things that just aren't true. So, you know, he does have a clear conflict of interest here. There's in the Select Board handbook, it gives an example of an indirect conflict of interest, where it gives a member of the Select Board who is also a volunteer of the fire department, and they want to talk about a line item to increase, put a piece of equipment, fire equipment in there. It's a clear conflict of interest. It's written in your handbook. And by the way, in 2019, during a Select Board meeting when the library was just starting out, Peter Rude called, told you you had a conflict of interest and said you couldn't even, you weren't even supposed to be talking about the motion, never mind being voting on it. So you abstained from that vote. But what made it all right for you to go and meet with Peter Rude, Isaac, and the bond bank, and then decide that the $195,000 was going to be the only choice that Guilford residents were going to have were to spend it on the library? It's a clear conflict of interest. It's basically saying you cannot serve too, you cannot serve too master.
Can we hang on this? Okay, Richard is not up for election, okay? This forum right now is supposed to only be about people who are up for election. So, all right, do we have a question for Tara Chaney? Lori Black.
Sorry, my question was for Jason.
Well, we'll come back. Barbara Belter-Timmy, question for Tara Chaney.
Oh, I can only ask about Tara. Okay.
That's right. I'm sorry, this is.
No, I'm agreeing to be, follow the rules. I'm done.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is cumbersome, but this is the only way I know that everybody gets equal airtime during the Q and A. Question for Zahn Eastes. Anyone have a question for Zahn Eastes? All right, anyone have a question for Lynn King? Tim and Ursula.
I would like to know if you support the proposed budget for the town, for the school, and for the fire department.
Tim, could you just say your name and where?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Tim and Ursula, we're on Green River Road.
And what's your last name?
Harris and Ursula Nadalney. And the question is, do you support the proposed town budget, the highway department budget, and the school budget?
Okay, that question is for Lynn King. You're muted.
Thank you. Yeah, so fire, highway, yes. School, yes. And the town budget, I have questions on, so I haven't completely made my decision. I will on first. I was looking forward to the answers with the capital fund this evening. I was looking forward to the answers with the capital fund this evening. So, thank you for that question.
Okay, a question for Michael Becker. All right, a question for Jason Herron. Okay, John Shaw, Anna Klein.
I was gonna throw in a question for Michael Becker. I was a little slow. You're so fat.
Okay, go ahead, Michael Becker.
I was just gonna ask, you know, given that there's, you know, I think a lot of hurt feelings and tension around the planning commission dismissal. I guess I wanted to hear your thoughts on how we might be able to heal as a town so that we can, you know, try to work together again and feel like we are all, all of our voices are being heard. That's all. Thanks.
Michael Becker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm getting a message. You cannot start your video because the host has disabled it? No, let's try that. Okay.
We got it.
There we go. I'm glad you asked that question. The change in direction with the planning commission has weighed on me greatly. We have the Select Board just in the past week have worked on a letter to clarify and also what the situation, what happened, and also to offer an apology. I would like to say that based on the information that we had at the time, I'm convinced that we made the right decision, but it was a very difficult decision. From my perspective, it was a chaotic, dysfunctional situation. And it needed to be changed. And so it was not easy. There was a good deal of pain that was caused. And I do not, I never felt great about how the commission members were notified. I think we stumbled, the Select Board, all of us, from that respect. And I would just like to take this public forum as an opportunity to thank the former commission members for their hard work and their dedication. It is very much appreciated. And I also would like to personally issue an apology to everyone. I've learned a lot and I hope to I hope we can go forward with the lessons learned.
Okay.
That's what I would say.
All right, Lori Black, you said you have two questions. You can ask one question to Jason Herron. Pick your best question.
I actually only had one question, sorry. So Jason, you told us that if you had more time, you would like to be able to say what you would do for the town. So I understand that you have concerns about things that have happened in the past. But I would appreciate hearing what your goals for Guilford would be in the future. Thank you.
The biggest one for me is property taxes and our seniors. I, you know, we have people in our community that have lived here for fifty-plus years. And their whole lives, they've spent their labor building their homes and making their properties beautiful. And now they've, you know, they're in their senior years and they want to, and they're living on fixed incomes. And our property taxes keep going up. Their property taxes keep going up and their incomes don't go up. And so we need to do something about this. You know, we're talking about the library. I love libraries. I mean, reading is such an important thing. And the community should have a place for this. But when we start making more funds and we start increasing this, it's got to increase your property taxes. There's no way around it. So when we're talking about these things, we really need to talk about what do we need and what do we want? We all want a beautiful library with an elevator and all of the bells and whistles you could imagine. But right now, we don't need that. We need to do something about our property taxes and lowering them, not increasing them. So that would be my main thing right there, is to try and figure out how we can do something better with the way our property taxes are increasing. That would be one of my main, main things to deal with. Thanks for the question.
Okay, question for Tara Chaney. Anne Ryder.
Sorry, that takes some time. Tara, I thought your statement was awesome and I was excited by your candidacy. Unfortunately, I didn't know about it until just a few days ago. And I'm curious as to why you weren't able to get on the ballot. But I will also say before you answer the question, so I'm done now after this. But if you are not elected, I would really strongly encourage you to run again. You would be a wonderful voice on the Select Board.
Anne, thank you so much. I tried to get on the ballot. I had COVID. And I went to the Guilford website and I read the instructions, I downloaded the documents, I got the information in, and the information wasn't correct. So even though I got it in the same day, I was told the next morning that I couldn't be on the ballot. And I fought for a couple of days via email and reached out to a lot of different people who said, "Well, this person could make the decision, and this person can make the decision, and this person can make the decision." And the decision was, I asked for it to be waived and there to be an exception because the instructions were wrong. And I didn't make the ballot. So here I am, and thank you so much for your kind words, Anne. I really appreciate it.
Okay, question for Zion Easties. Dan Collet. Oh, Sostak, sorry. Okay, go ahead, Dan. But Mike, we haven't heard from Mike, but go ahead. I called on you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so appreciate the time. It's my understanding, Zahn, that you're the liaison to the planning commission. Just wondering, prior to the dismissal, was there any attempt at corrective action or coaching? You know, I appreciate you as a volunteer to the community, but the folks in the planning commission were also volunteers too. I'm a manager of people. I often go through coaching opportunities to elevate people if there's challenges. Just wondering if that avenue was pursued prior to dismissal. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thanks for that question, Dan. No, in fact, there was not an attempt to work with the planning commission to address the issues. I think it's fair to say that the Select Board determined that the issues were so, as Michael said, were chaotic and dysfunctional enough that it merited us making the choice that we did. We had been warned by planning commission members that they would do what they could to stop the forward motion of adopting the plan in the process that was laid out. And it just seemed untenable for us at the time. So we opted for a different direction. I will say that, like Michael, it was a very difficult decision. And I think that had we, had we, there certainly could have been other ways to have handled it. I think we're firm about the decision. I think it's a good decision for the town and we will get where we need to go. I thank the folks who were on the prior planning commission very much for their part in producing the plan to the point that it got. And we're excited about moving it forward as we go. So thank you for that question. Okay, good question for Lynn King. Mike Sostak? Is your hand still up? Nope. Tim Harris? Tim Harris, we can't hear you.
Oh, I had a question for Mr. Herron and you didn't give us enough time to ask all those questions? I'm sorry.
Right now, we're looking for a question for Lynn King.
Oh, well, okay. I already asked her one, sorry.
Okay, all right, well then, now we're back to Michael Becker. Any questions for Michael Becker? All right, any questions for Jason Herron? And Tim, you said you had one?
Yes, sir. Yes, I do. The same question I asked for Lynn, which she didn't fully answer because obviously she hadn't looked at the budget for the town. If she didn't.
Hold on, hold on. Just ask your question, okay?
Certainly. Mr. Herron, are you in favor of approving our town budget, our highway budget, and our school budget?
Boy, that's a loaded question. Because here's the thing is, I don't know what's going on. I really don't. I'm trying to find out. I'm trying to find out where these funds are coming from, where they're going to, where they're pulling them from, what these grants are coming from, who's applying for the grants. There's so much information out here that isn't being shared with the community, especially the working members of this community, that I vote no on every one of these things because now I'm involved. Now I want to know. Now I want to know where all these monies are coming from. Why does our school cost $3.47 million a year? We could build a school for $3.47 million a year. Something is broken here. And so that's what I want to do. I want to dive into this, Tim. I really want to look into all the details of this and really, so when I have any answer for you, I can say, "This is exactly what I think. This is exactly where these monies are coming from and this is what we need to do." So, yeah, I've got my work cut out for me, for sure, to be able to answer that question like I want to answer this question. But for now, no, I'm not voting, I'm voting no on every one of those.
Okay, question for Tara Chaney. John Hague.
Yeah, my question was actually for Jason Herron, so I withdraw my question. Thank you.
Okay, Sandy Harrington, question for Tara Chaney.
My question was also for Jason Herron.
Okay. I hope we're getting ready to wind down this section because we've still got quite a bit to do. Question for, let's see, who's up next? Zion Easties. Question for Zahn. A question for Lynn King. If I'm moving too fast, I'm sorry. Hannah Jenkins. Question for Lynn King.
No, that was actually a question for Zahn, but there was just a lag.
Okay, go ahead.
We can't.
Okay, great. I was just curious about how it was decided this year whether we would be meeting for town meeting remotely or whether we could gather in person again, if that was a Select Board decision, or how that was made.
Thank you. I'm not altogether, I won't be able to speak with the certainty that someone else would be able to speak about this particular issue. My understanding is that this year, if any town chose the Australian ballot, they were required to have a pre-town meeting that was virtual, that it was not an option for us. We didn't make the decision. We made the decision to have the Australian ballot rather than move our election to another date later, a date certain later in the spring. That was in consultation with several different aspects of the town. The Select Board didn't make a decision unilaterally at all. We worked with the school, we worked with the staff and so forth to figure out what was going on with the other towns in the Windham Southeast District.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are people gonna be really upset if we move on? Do people feel as if maybe we've gotten to know these candidates?
I'd like to say something.
Okay, Jackie.
No.
So Sandy?
My video is not coming on every time I press the button, so maybe it will there. Okay, I just wanted to have a question for Jason Herron and it's more, Jason, I really wanted to thank you for representing the taxpayers. Twenty years ago, I brought ballots around to elderly residents who were all telling me the same thing, that they had given up and that they were selling their houses. They could not afford the taxes. Myself and my husband live on a very fixed income. We only get social security. And it's not only just dipping into savings, there is no more savings. It's into debt now. So thank you, Jason, for being there and doing what you're doing.
Okay, question for Michael Becker. Jackie, do you have a question for Michael Becker? Jackie Gaines, your hand is up.
Sorry, I'm trying to get, just a minute.
Okay, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
So first, I'm not sure who the question's for. Which person did you say?
Michael Becker.
Okay, I'd like to just start by thanking the five people that are willing to step up and serve the town as a Select Board member. I think that's awesome. I hope that the town can heal with, you know, moving forward. So tonight, I do have a question. It's a tough one because I was involved with the planning commission. So I did hear from Michael Becker. I want to thank him and I want to thank Zahn as well that you're saying that there was chaos and, what was it, dys-something? Dysfunctional, that the board was dysfunctional. But yet neither one of you has mentioned, "Where did you get the information?" I'm hearing that it doesn't sound like it's from either of the two of you. And I know, Zahn, you were our liaison, but you just indicated that it was difficult and I'm happy to hear that. But I have a question and I think it would clarify some of the issues in town that are going around. Who was it that stated that we were chaotic and dysfunctional so that you would move as a unanimous decision to make that we were banned? I really think that would help heal the town and give an answer because it's not coming from you people. I'm asking, who was it that reported or stated that?
Okay, Jackie, you know, I'm not sure I can allow that question because it's a personnel question. And it's, I mean, if Zion or Michael want to answer it, that's fine.
I do not feel that that would be appropriate to out any particular individual.
I agree. This is a personnel issue and we are bound by state statute to protect our citizens and that's what we are about doing. That's one of the reasons that this is so difficult, I think, is that because the issues are wound up with personnel. And we made decisions based on actions and understandings that we had. And we're not in the business of outing anybody in this community. Okay, with that, if it's with people's permission, I'd like to, you know, wind up this section. And Jackie, I want to thank you for the first part of your statement, which expressed gratitude to the five people who are running. And, you know, we're lucky to have five candidates. And I thank all of them for their participation. I thank all of you for your questions. And I would like to move on, if that's okay. Lynn, you've got your hand up. Do you have something to say?
Yes, and I would like to comment, I guess, because I think we won't be able to have answers and I, you know, what can we do? I find it odd even, so when I hear the word dysfunction, and I want to share this because I too was on the planning commission, and it was hurtful and shameful to not only all be dissolved, but we had to read all kinds of stuff in the newspapers. So, and it was derating. And the only thing I'd like to share here for the public, for people who are on this tonight, is for people to know that when you bring a, like a true diverse group of people, different views, different, people from all walks of life, and we don't all have that same opinion or thought or even care for the discussions held. And sadly, if that seems to be dysfunctional, to have a healthy dialogue, I believe that that's what our town is missing and I guess I would like for everyone to know that. If we cannot have discussions, it's just, it really is important. So I hope that Dawn and Michael and Richard, Veranda, everyone at the table takes that in because we are not, we were not bad people by having discussions that we, about things we cared about. So I thank you for this time.
Okay, Sandy, I'm sorry, I'm going to end this part of the, of the program because it's 10 and 9 and we've still got a lot of ground to cover. Next up is, is any candidates for other offices in town who would like to speak and I hope you will not. Auditor, Lister, Lister, Moderator, Cemetery Commissioner, Cemetery Commissioner, Library Trustee, Library Trustee, Trustee of Public Funds. Is there anyone who'd like to make a statement? Okay. Seeing none, let's move on to the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory District and I think we're going to hear first from candidate for that, that board. Is Lana Dever still with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening Guilford. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I can see that Guilford is brimming with passionate engaged citizens and I feel lucky to be in such company. I will keep this brief because I know you've all been here for a very long time and, and you've got a lot of work to do. Throughout my career, I've worked to ensure that everyone has a seat at the table. I believe in community action and I believe in doing the hard work it entails. From Meals on Wheels, Big Brothers Big Sister, the Root Social Justice Center, to my current work as a youth and transition case manager at Youth Services, I have devoted my life to this work. I'm running for the school board because I believe that a successful community starts with our students. We have to support the parents and educators who are working so hard in doing things that they never imagined to keep our children safe and growing during what are some of the most challenging times in recent history. If there was ever a time to work together and strengthen our connections, it is now. I know that I'm capable of finding common ground with all members of our community and that together we can work to find solutions to the challenges we face. From experience, I've learned that each of us, at our core, seeks the same things: love, safety, to be seen and heard. We need school board members who are capable of meeting that need and I am the woman for the job. I look forward to the opportunity to working with you and to healing some of these divides that I've heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Lana. Are there any other candidates for the school, school district board who'd like to speak? Particularly if you're in a contested election. Sean Murphy, you know, you're going to give a presentation. Is this about your candidacy or is this your presentation about the school district year?
No, I can wait until the presentation.
Okay, well, I think you're up. That's, that's.
Oh, all right.
You are, you are presenting. This is Murphy.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Yeah, I moved to Guilford 53 years ago after I graduated from college. And I'm Sean Murphy. I live on the Heisberg Road, so I've been here for 53 years. I first became a school board member for the District 6 Board and Brattleboro for the BUHS Board. So I was a representative from Guilford for that board. When the merger happened in 2019, I decided that I wanted to run for the Unified Board, the WSESD Board. And I did and I've been there since. So I've been on school board related things for many years. I am the Chair of the Finance Committee of the School Board. Tonight, we had the informational meeting for the WSESD presentation to the public for the budget. So, speaking of budgets, there seems to be a lot of information out there and a lot of people who, you know, have questions about spending for schools. Let me give you a little bit of background. The WSESD is a unified district of four towns, Putney, Damarston, Guilford and Brattleboro. And in those four towns, there are nine schools and there are over 2,200 students. And there are 420-plus staff. So it's, it's a big, big entity. A very important entity. Our job is to see how well we can educate the students of all four towns. And that also includes the high school, the middle school in Brattleboro with Guilford Swoon Sco and the WRCC, which is a career center. So it's a big entity. The budget this year, because there was some question about budget and some talk about the expenditure at schools, the budget this year is $60,293,834. So if you take that number, it's actually up quite a bit from the previous year, 7.6%. But this is a year like no other year because of the pandemic. And the federal and the state government realized at the beginning of the pandemic that learning capabilities for students was tremendously impacted in a negative way. So the state legislature and the federal government made available the ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, and the ESR funds, which is the Elementary School and Secondary Emergency Relief Act. And so we have those funds available, in addition to which, well, let me start over a little bit. So the, the number that I just mentioned, that $60 million, is increased. But if you subtract from that, the grants that came in, the education spending this year is $47,703, I'm sorry, $47,703,562. So that if you take the equalized pupil numbers, which is 2,262.9 pupils, and you divide that by the education spending, you come up with a spending per pupil, which is $21,081. So that made an equivalent tax rate of 1,000, I mean, I'm sorry, 1.630, which means that the tax for education on $100,000 home in any of the four towns or Brattleboro, before it was equalized with the common level of appraisal, it means that that, on $100,000, the tax on that property would be $1,630. So our adjusted tax rate in Guilford is 1.738. So if you have, if you have $100,000 versus assessed property, then you will be paying $1,738 for that $100,000 of assessed rate. So in actual fact, the taxes this year in the town of Guilford, because of the large increase in the yield that the state legislature assigned to all school districts in the state and because of the ARPA and the ESR funds, the tax rate in Guilford is actually going down 1.6% for the education tax rate. Now, there are some estimates, so it could be by the time the tax bills go out, that there'd be a little bit of tweaking. But it will still be in the negative range. And just because Mr. Heron said that the Guilford school spending was $3.4 million, I would like to correct him if I could on that. The school spending for the town, Guilford Central School this year is $2,726,471. So if you took and divided, well, I was going to say, some people think that if you take the number of students in the school and you divide that number of students, which in Guilford is 103, I'm sorry, 139 students currently, oh, you can't do that because we are a unified district and all towns, all students, all spending gets put into a big pot and that number of equalized pupils, the 2,262.9, is divided into the educational spending number, which this year is $47,703,562, which gives us the spending per pupil, which is $21,081. So, sorry to spend so much time on finances, but I did it because there's such a concern. And I assume that people will be glad to hear that the education spending tax rate will actually be lower this year than it was last year. There are many other things that happen at the WSESD other than just finance. And so many of them need to be understood and need to be commonly talked about. The structure, governance structure of the WSESD is widely misunderstood. And I would love to make it so that everybody did understand the structure of our school system in these four towns. And in addition to that, to the town of Vernon, which is a single district, I mean, a single town district in the WSESU. So the WSESU has two districts. One is made up of four towns and one is made up of one town. So with that, I think I'll conclude my presentation and I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you very much.
It's after 9. Do we have one or two questions for, for Sean? Mary Wisman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Hi, Sean, it was an interesting presentation. I would love to know more. I, to me, 21,000 per pupil, I don't know if everybody heard that, but is outrageous. I happen to be an elementary school teacher and it is outrageous. I see you shaking your head. It's outrageous. So I, my question is, my question is, because I just heard this and I want to clarify with you, is it true that because we're part of this union, that as a town, we can no longer use our gymnasium, the elementary school gymnasium, say, for a town meeting?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think John Gagnon would be the person to direct that question to. It's, to my knowledge, that is not true. I'm pretty sure that it is not true.
No, that was a COVID, I believe that was a COVID-related.
And, and let me, let me just say something about the perp- 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 costs. The state sets a cap every year. Most schools in the state of Vermont go right up to the cap and then they hover below the cap because if you go over the cap, there are tax implications. This year, the state has suspended the tax cap, I mean, the, the cap on spending, not the tax cap, the spending gap. And the reason for that is that this, these last two years have been more difficult, more challenging for students, family, staff and administrators than we've ever experienced before. This has been an incredibly difficult time. And we have always been below the cap, ever since I've been on the school boards and that's 18 years. No, in the high school, used to be the high school or the Guilford Central School or any of the schools now in the merged district, that we've always stayed below the cap. And because of the help they received from the federal government and because the state set a very high yield number, the taxes are actually going down, as I said before. So the, the actual amount per pupil is, is, it's not an egregious amount. It's what it costs to educate a student in a school system.
I'm sure you do a great job with what you do. I just know that if I, I have 15 children in my room and if I had 21,000 for each of those children individually with what I could do with that, if somebody handed me the 21,000 cash, what I could do with that for my classroom? It doesn't make sense and it needs to be fixed. And I know that's bigger than what we can do right here.
Let me say something because that's a good point. You would have to create your own building. You'd have to heat your own building. You'd have to have your own buses. You'd have to have your own library. You'd have to have your own music department. You'd have to have your own counselors. You'd have to have your own central office. So it's, you know, $21,000, if you think that $21,000 just takes care of the teacher-student relationship, it'd be nice if it did, could. But we have so many other things to cover, so many other things. It's huge. It's huge.
And a lot of those, a lot of those.
Mary, Mary, can we move on? Jason's got a question. I think we should, we should end it and go to Beth, Beth Bristol, who's going to give us a presentation on the school. And we can get out of here on a, on a high note and a feel-good, feeling good about our school. So Jason, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm ready to go too. I just, I was confused because there's a, a warrant was issued a few select board meetings ago for $3.47 million to pay for Guilford for the school. And you're saying it's 2-point-something million? So I want to know why.
It's right off the budget for this year, which is available on the WSESD.
Excuse me, sir, 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 Sean, Sean, hang on, I say, they signed a warrant for $3.47 million. That's what I want to know is, did they, would they've, they'd sign more money away if it was only supposed to be 2-something? I'm not sure because they definitely signed a warrant for $3.47 million. And we can go back and look at the select board meeting, but that's what it is.
Yeah. Well, one thing I've learned, Jason, in education spending, in education, there's no lineal path for funds. Everything, you have to consider money going in and money coming out. But the school budget for Guilford Central School this year is $2,726,471. And that's available on the WSESU website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Now let's go to Beth Bristol and the, and I hope you're still there, Beth, because we, we want to hear from you. And people, this is a wonderful presentation. If you haven't seen it before, I urge you to stick around and, and, and take it in. So all about our school.
Thanks, Rick, and thanks for having us. I am joined this evening with the other members of the Leadership Council. So I hope that it'll be seamless as we transition between different presenters, but I'll, I'll call them out. So I'll share my screen here. And hopefully it comes up. There we go. I would like to start off the presentation by thanking the school board, especially our Guilford representatives, Sean and Kelly. It is a thankless job at times and I think all of us on the Leadership Council appreciate and understand that and can't thank you enough for the extreme amount of time and dedication that you've put into it. So would like to start off with that, just to help those of you who may not Um, just to help those of you who may not understand the difference between the Leadership Council and the School Board, the Leadership Council is something that was formed out of the merger that happened a couple of years ago, um, with the sole intent of providing a local voice to the larger school board. And so it's made up of, uh, administrators and staff at the school as well as community members. Um, we're a group of 10 and we meet monthly, sometimes twice a month, depending on what's going on. Um, and then we provide feedback to the school board. Sometimes they solicit our input. Sometimes we give it unsolicited. Um, but all of it related to Guilford and helping to promote the needs and desires of the Guilford School. Um, so we are looking forward to when the Leadership Council can reintegrate and revisit the school building because of COVID, we haven't been able to. Um, it's something that we look forward to most, um, in what we do is being able to spend one or two days a year inside the building and really understanding and seeing what happens there. Um, we'd like to invite the select board members, uh, current, future, to come in and do the same. It'll give you a better understanding of how things operate, um, how the money is spent, um, and a, a good appreciation for how wonderful our school is. Um, so as we go into the presentation, um, we will start with, um, a, a slide here that our principal, John Gagnon, is going to speak to. So, John?
Hi, good evening. I'm John Gagnon. I'm the principal at Guilford Central School and it's an honor to be here tonight. Uh, and thank you for having the Leadership Council. So there have been challenges and there have been solutions here this year with, uh, the 21, 22 school year. So, uh, as the slide shows, there's been COVID testing, contact tracing, and, uh, and then the administration, just the logistics of running a school during a global pandemic. Uh, I will say that, uh, we've been very fortunate. The community has been really supportive. The school community has adhered, uh, to the, uh, safety guidelines. Uh, our school nurse has done a tremendous, heroic job in terms of, uh, the COVID testing, contact tracing, et cetera. Uh, staffing shortages, uh, like you folks who are in private business with us in public education. We faced staffing shortages this year, uh, specifically for our school. Uh, we had some staff that were out on leave, uh, that decided not to return for the school year. And it took us some time to find suitable, uh, replacements in terms of, uh, teaching positions and, uh, shortages in terms of, uh, substitute teachers, uh, when folks were out for various reasons. Um, those shortages are getting better and, uh, a shout out to the subs that we have. Uh, we've had some Guilford community members who have been, uh, constantly in our building, filling these shortages. And we really appreciate them. Uh, resource availability, again, like everybody else, there have been, uh, supply chain issues and challenges. Again, we've soldiered on through those. And finally, with safety protocols, uh, the children and the staff have been masked for the, uh, entirety of the school year. Uh, and I foresee that that will continue unless the AOE and the Department of Health change the guidelines in the near future. We are keeping our fingers crossed that as we move from a pandemic to an endemic, that, that could change. Uh, as we moved into the February break, uh, the guidance had changed slightly, uh, where masks were not universally required, uh, that if schools had 80% of their student population vaccinated, that they could consider, uh, unmasking. We're not there yet. We're at 66% of our children are vaccinated, uh, and with our staff, our staff is almost 100%. Um, and so we wait to see where we go with the virus and, uh, but I gotta tell you, the kids are fantastic and they have adapted to, uh, all of the different protocols. Uh, and they are my heroes every single day. Turn it back to you, Beth.
Thank you. Next, I'll invite, uh, Sarah Rosso to talk about outdoor classrooms.
Hi, uh, can you hear me? My, my name is Sarah Rosso. Um, I live on Lee Road and I am the Farm to School Coordinator at Guilford School. And I'm here to talk about our outdoor classrooms. Um, so in, uh, fall of 2020, um, Guilford School announced that one of our major responses to the pandemic would be to, um, get students outside as much as possible, uh, because that was, uh, one of the safest options. Um, and our, we got an amazing response from our community in, um, in support of that effort. And we had, um, community, uh, community members organize a fundraiser as well as come together to build these incredible pavilions that are serving as outdoor, um, classrooms for our, our classes. And so I, um, we wanted to let you know that we are so grateful for those and we are putting them to good use every day. Um, it's, it's really wonderful to, to see kids, um, utilizing these, these pavilions every day. And we've also had, um, uh, uh, community members and parents, uh, donate firewood and donate jet sleds and bags of kindling and, um, lumber, lumber for, um, natural play areas. So we're, we're really grateful to the community support that we've gotten to help develop these outdoor classrooms. Um, and we, um, we at this point have an outdoor classroom area for every grade level. Um, for some, that means an area of the forest where they have, um, a play area and a stump circle and a fire circle and, um, some tarps hung up to, um, to create a, a classroom area. And then for some, they, they utilize these pavilions and, um, you can see in the spot in picture here, we have this, um, outdoor play area that was built by parent volunteers, um, that our first graders use pretty regularly and other, other classes too. Um, so it's been really exciting to see, um, to see the outdoor classrooms really being used, um, a great deal. And, um, Guilford School for a long time has been working toward, um, a, a goal of, of increasing our outdoor education. And, um, so this, this has really, uh, supported us in moving toward that goal. Um, so I think, let's see, um, so, so we use our outdoor classrooms for a number of different things. Um, and different grade levels use them in different ways. Our, uh, pre-K program is in their outdoor classroom every day for about four, at least four hours. Um, and they have a completely nature-based program. And then grades K through six utilize their outdoor classrooms for playtime, for mealtime, for snacks. Um, I cook over fires with them pretty regularly. We're, um, moving forward with more nature-based learning. Um, there's a lot of social emotional learning and team building and, um, working on 20, 21st century skills that happens in these outdoor classrooms. Um, and there's also a lot of academic work that's happening in the outdoor classrooms. There's kids reading and writing and doing science out in the forest. And, um, so we use them in lots of different ways every day, um, throughout the year. So I think that's all I have for this slide, Beth. Um, so we wanted to talk a little bit more about the nature-based education that is happening at Guilford School. Um, we are involved in a, um, long-term professional development relationship with Antioch University that we, uh, started last year. We have some grant funding that's helping us access this professional development. And so we're working with folks from Antioch who are supporting our teachers in, um, but, uh, creating, uh, integrated curriculum that allows them to use the forest and use their natural surroundings, um, to, to teach a lot of the curriculum. And so different teachers are in different stages with that. Um, but here's, here's some pictures to show you some, some ways that nature-based education is happening at Guilford School. On the left here, we have some fourth graders who, um, this fall engaged in a soil study that was all outdoors. Um, and we have, in the middle, there's a, a pre-K student who is, um, practicing, sitting very still there, um, to feed the birds and learning all about birds and, and the natural world around her. Um, and then down on the lower right, we've got some students in one of, in a fort that they built in the forest. And then, um, the upper right shows you, um, a first grader who was, um, this was part of a plant study that for, that first graders engaged in last fall. They learned, they were plant scientists and they learned all about, um, plant science through, um, being outside and learn, learning about plants, um, in the garden and the forest. Um, so the, so we're utilizing a, um, so, so here it says the, the garden-based NG, so NGSS is the, um, the, um, the science standards and, um, STEM is, um, science, technology, as, um, engineering and math. So, um, so we're, we're able to, um, teach, teach a lot of different things through nature. Um, and our, and like I said already, our pre-K program is, is primarily outdoors. Um, okay, Beth, next slide, please. I'll try to keep it quick. Sorry for rambling. Um, and, um, so the Farm to School Program, this is my, my primary focus, although I help a lot with the, the outdoor education stuff too. Um, so our Farm to School Program involves, um, gets all students, pre-K through sixth grade, involved in hands-on gardening projects, cooking projects. Um, we're about to start up our sugaring season. Um, and the cooking that we do usually involves some produce from the garden. Um, and, oh, and this winter, it's been a lot of cooking over campfires. Um, we also do lessons around nutrition and composting. Um, and our, our kind of major goal is learning about agriculture and, and learning about where our food comes from in very hands-on ways. And we have some great partnerships with local farms. Um, we're able, we work, um, closely with Franklin Farm and they supply us with maple syrup and they supply us with ground beef and, um, we are very grateful to be able to, to use those in our cafeteria. And I think I'll, I'm happy to answer questions later, but I'll leave it at that. And I, I hope that everything I said was accurate. John, I don't know if you want to jump in and correct me on anything about the, the Antioch piece or, and I hope I didn't misspeak about anything, but, um, I think I covered it.
You're doing a great job, Sarah.
Thanks, John. Okay. Sarah, that was great. Um, so John, we'll continue with you and, and speaking about student achievement.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, so I get, I want to emphasize that Guilford Central School was well-positioned academically prior to the pandemic. We had done a tremendous amount of work around our core instruction or, and our interventions for students that were struggling, uh, particularly with reading and with mathematics. So going into the pandemic, we had really good systems and structures in place. Uh, and so in 2019, we were recognized as one of the top 10 highest achieving elementary schools in the state of Vermont. And, uh, and this was based upon our standardized testing scores, uh, being above the district and the state averages. Now, this is great and literacy and math, uh, are core fundamental academic skills that all students need in terms to succeed in life, to open doors to whatever future that, that they are, uh, wanting to be, uh, involved with. Um, and their standardized scores. So we're proud of those scores and, uh, we recognize that that is not the ti- total picture in terms of student achievement for children. Uh, and I also, as the second bullet says, existing programs and best practices help prepare for the challenge. So we went into the pandemic, into the initial closure in good shape. And, uh, the fancy term is multi-tiered systems of support. Uh, education is filled with jargon and what it really means is that we give each child what they need, uh, in order to succeed academically. So next slide, Beth.
Thanks, John.
So, uh, speaking about the whole child, uh, some quantitative data that we have in terms of how are we doing with, uh, the equally important, uh, measures of student engagement, uh, student safety, a sense of belonging, a sense of, uh, the school culture. So, uh, we, uh, do surveys. We do them, uh, we did one last spring and our students, uh, as you can see, uh, 74% uh, responded favorably to, uh, all of the questions. These are students in grades three through six that took this survey. Uh, and as you can see, compared to the district average of 64%, uh, and this was again last May. Uh, as an addendum, uh, we did a survey in October and our results were at 77% compared to the district average, which was at 59%. So there's room for us to grow, uh, but comparatively, we're doing a good job and, uh, we strive to do even a better job. And then I also want to emphasize that ongoing program development focuses on all needs of students and of children. So that's the academic, the social and the emotional. Uh, this year, we've been very, uh, fortunate to have a, uh, social worker on staff two days a week. And that is due to the federal funds that Sean was, uh, speaking about earlier in his presentation. Uh, it is a part of our system of supports for children. Uh, it's been a long time in the coming and it's one of the, um, benefits of consolidation is that we as a town were able to provide mental health supports for our children. And, uh, we do have children that do need that level of emotional and social, uh, support. Next slide, Beth.
Great. Thank you. So where does the Leadership Council come into all of this? Um, we reached out to the school community and asked what their number one need was, how we could help. And what we heard from them overwhelmingly was resources and staffing, more bodies in the building, more assistance. Um, and so the Leadership Council drafted a letter to our school board, um, requesting just that. And we're happy to say that those additional positions are in fact included in the budget that's before you for approval this year. Um, it includes two additional positions, not full-time, but one additional halftime academic support teacher, uh, specifically focusing on interventions and enrichment, which would bring us up to a total of three FTEs or full-time equivalents for academic support teachers. We also asked for a 50% increase to the social worker position that John just spoke about, um, which as he said, was a long time coming, something that we have wanted to do for years. Um, but until the merged scenario, we were just not able to afford it. Um, so that position will be increasing from 40% to 80%. Um, and as I said, these two position increases are included in, um, the budget this year. The other thing that we did is we partnered with the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department and the Emergency Management, um, Center here in Guilford to draft and submit a grant, um, for a new automatic generator that would support, um, the entire school building and not only help to keep our children in school and operational during a power outage, um, but it would also allow us to utilize that building as an emergency shelter for the community in the future. Um, so we haven't heard back on the grant yet, um, but we're optimistic and hoping that that's something that we can collaborate on. And I'll turn this slide over to Erin Kachuk.
Thanks, Beth. Um, I'm Erin Kachuk and I live on, uh, Weatherhead Hollow Road and I'm going to be speaking to community support with the Leadership Council and Guilford School. There has been continued community support and volunteering at Guilford School, even though there continues to be restrictions and guidelines due to the pandemic. These are just some, but not all of the ways that our school community has come together for the staff and students this year. One of the focuses this year for the Leadership Council was coming up with creative ways to help support staff during these hard times. Starting in October, LC volunteers delivered meals on Tuesdays for staff at Guilford School. These meals were funded through the Everyone Eats program and will continue into March. Multiple local businesses and families were able to donate to the school and work to improve outdoor spaces. The donations included firewood, kindling and cast iron cookware for outdoor cooking. Before school began this year, enhancements were made to the story walk feature in the front field. Permanent storyboards were built and installed by community members. In the fall, first grade parents added natural play structures to their outdoor play space. Parents also organized and led a soccer program after school that was able to include all grade levels. Guilford School held a winter activity program this year where each class was able to go sledding and skating at Memorial Park. They also had special classroom activities, which included STEM projects and activities in their outdoor classrooms. Parents were able to sign up to chaperone and attend along with their children in these activities. Sixth grade parents have also been able to volunteer and co-lead different projects during the sixth grade clubs. And I will, I think you're up next, Beth.
Thanks, Erin. So we'll close out with a budget overview. Um, as I mentioned before, although the Leadership Council doesn't have, um, fiscal responsibility over the school budget, we do offer, um, an advisory component and can make rec- we do offer an advisory component and can make recommendations like we did this year regarding staffing and make pleas to the Guilford School Board or to the Town School Board to recognize the needs of Guilford. And so quick overview, our current student enrollment is at 131, although it may be different now from when I put together this presentation. And our staff is at 34. Keep in mind, although it's at 34, those are not all full-time positions, so they're not all in the building at, at the same time. And two of those positions are ESER-funded and those are the COVID federal fund granted positions. As Sean spoke to, our Guilford budget is up 6.6% from last year. This includes additional staffing requests and other cost increases. However, as he explained, the tax rate is estimated to decrease by 1.6%. And as, as he also mentioned, that's due to the increase in the homestead property yield and the increase in federal funding. So I can't answer specific questions on the budget. That would be Sean's purview. But I will say that the Leadership Council very much supports the budget. We're excited about the additions of the new positions. We're grateful that the school board heard us, listened to our voice and made those changes to the budget based on our request. We want all residents to be supportive and encouraging of our school. So like I said, we welcome everyone to when they're able to come in and, and have a look at what we do. So with that, I will end the presentation and open it up if I'm able to any questions.
Okay, a couple of questions. I see Ann Ryder's hand is up.
This is a, this is not a question. This is a comment. Basically, I just wanted to say that the Guilford School has been a leader in the area of outdoor education since before the pandemic. They were well-positioned for the pandemic, but other schools, both in the district and the whole area, have looked to Guilford for modeling and leadership and, and really doing an outstanding outdoor education program. And I, I really want to thank the school for doing that. It certainly has been a huge benefit during the pandemic, but also before and it will be after the pandemic as well.
Good. Thank you, Ann. Now, I think, I think it's time to wind up, but I want to thank the Leadership Council and, and John Gagnon. People are, have amazing energy and enthusiasm for a presentation this time of night. And I'm very grateful to you for your, for your presentation and all your work for the school. In closing, I will say, as I said at the beginning, that everybody at this meeting cares about the town. And we should remember that. And I hope that next year, we can look forward to a less contentious town meeting in the school, face to face and the way it used to be. And with that, this is your humble moderator, Rick Zaymore, thanking you all for attending, thanking the Grange, the Broadbrook Grange and the town and the wonderful guys at BCTV and, and Core, who's also wonderful, but doesn't work in the evenings. So thank you all for coming and I will see you later.